If you would all rise to the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence, follow that. It's allegiance.
Back of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, of God, physical, everything is God.
A moment of silence, please. Thank you. Welcome everyone today and the purpose of this meeting is for the discuss the telephone, internet, internet service. And to that I'll turn it over to Mr. Carter to lead us into this, County Manager.
Mr. Chairman, as, as you recall, we have, we solicited for a second time back in July for phone and internet services. And we've determined that we had two responsive bidders, one Skyline and the other is Ideocom. There's been a couple of discussions in between July and now about that. Most recently, we referenced having the opportunity for a potential IT person to come on board and review those proposals. And that, that is now on the back burner. What has happened since is we have had at least one, what I would call sporadic encounter here in this building with some of the phones working, some of the phones not working for a period of time. It seemed to have resolved itself and after some conversation with the providers, it seems that that is one indicator that the system that we have in place could be getting ready for either continued trouble or basically an expiration. And in order to attempt to get ahead of that, that's why we have fast-tracked this opportunity now. Today's meeting, if, if appropriate, and I know that we have invited both, both providers here, I only see one at the moment unless someone is in the background, but like to be able to put those proposals on the screen and perhaps be walked through any, any of the questions or the proposal itself and allow for questions and, and answers to be conducted between the providers who's presenting and the board. We also have our, our consultant that we brought on today who I had forwarded each of you his comments back on 9/13. So you should have a record of the comments that Danny had provided with, with his assessment. And I think you'll have a breakdown of the cost as well to accompany that. And if that is appropriate, that was what I would recommend and how we proceed. While, while Drew was getting everything lined up, by virtue of being the only present, one present in the audience, we'll, we'll get it on the screen and then we'll ask you to come to the podium and go there.
Certainly, I'd like It had the medical procedure, but he was, he was last night about 8:30 and I was not able to talk to him. So I'll answer every question I possibly can for you. If there's something that's outstanding, I will find the answer and get back to you quickly.
Chairman, I would like to remind you that sitting in the audience, the mics will not pick that up, he needs to be at the podium.
Well, soon as Drew gets us ready. If you would, take the podium, Mar, for that.
John, can you walk out one of those lights? The light switch, not with the hammer. That one, that's good, that's good.
Have you got a laser up there on the podium?
My other disclaimer is I just got new glasses, so I'm trying to figure out where everything is there, but I, I think, yeah, that way, there we go. Though it's quite a link, somewhat of a lengthy proposal, but I do believe that it is pretty, you know, conclusive with the information and that's a good highlight page for sure. Just past that page is, is a breakdown of those costs too. That's the good, a good summary page though. Okay, I wasn't sure if you want me to fully present everything that's on here or if you just want to have questions on it, I'm not sure exactly where you'd like to be in there. Another, we were able to meet all the objectives of the request with the exception of the, the bandwidth we are, we offer, we're offering 100 meg instead of 50. That's the, the closest package I believe that we, we have in that regard. Pricing wise, it's, it's still within the same structure. That's just what we all offer and is certainly provided via fiber optics, a symmetrical service. I'm happy to answer any questions or challenges that you may have or, or find those answers out for you. After our study, Brent and his team were able to go to all the facilities and do testing and look at wiring and infrastructure and everything in place to again, meet the objectives of your requests.
Any questions on this?
I think just from Michael, we still use fax lines for one or two departments or?
Are stung, yes.
We still do?
Yes, sir. I would just ask if any of the, any of the board has any questions about the proposal in general. I know it's kind of, kind of different to just kind of stand there with silence, but if, if there are any questions in general about the proposals, perhaps that would help kind of guide this discussion.
Or the floor is open, Bobby?
Question in general, and I, it may say someplace, I can't remember reading it, about the warranty on the, on the units themselves, how long are they warranted for or what's the, what's the breakdown on warranties?
That would be something Mr. Keith could tell you right off the top of his head, but I'd have to look it up. I believe it is in here. It's, it should be comprehensive in, in covering the warranty as well. And I do apologize, I know that he really wishes he could be here, but probably not as much as I wish he could be here. So, you know, while I'm looking for that, you know, which I, we appreciate, I know in the beginning of the proposal, it talks about our relationship with the county, you know, of course this year we celebrating our 70th year and the, from, in terms of support, I think we've proven that, you know, we're right here for you to handle any issues that you have, we're just around the corner and reside within the community. The equipment itself warranty wise, at minimum is a manufacturer's warranty, but I, I'm looking for that at this moment and I apologize, I may have to get, get back with you on that, although it should be in here.
If, if we get to it later, that's fine, but I was just asking that question like Mr. Carter said, the, what worries me is what's happening to the system that we have now, starting to deteriorate possibly, I don't know what that cost would be to fix what this cost will be down the road if the same thing starts to happen again.
I can certainly understand your concern. The, the devices that, that were chosen for this particular IFP are ones that we use, you know, in healthcare, critical care. And, you know, we've had a, we've had a lot of success with those and the company stands behind it because it's one of our biggest equipment providers. So we're one of their, great relationship as far as a customer for them as well. So we, we do have priority on that. I'm looking back. Trying to find that warranty information for you, but we, we've not had any issues.
While you're, while you're looking for that, where's this stuff made? Is it made overseas? Is it made here? Is there going to be a problem getting parts? You know, everybody right now is, is backed up on getting some kind of parts, whether it be for the transfer station or whether it be for tractors or farm equipment. It's the same for technology equipment?
We do have a stockpile in our warehouse and there are spares that would be issued to you as well for support, let alone what we have in our warehouse in West Jefferson. So we keep a good stock because it is, the Polycom devices are something that we carry and not just, wouldn't just be for this account, it would be for healthcare, for other, you know, for the, for school system, those sort of things. We keep a large quantity on hand. However, having said that, there's, there's a lot of issues with, with any type of electronic or just about anything made these days in terms of availability, but we do, we do have a pretty large warehouse, you know, of supplies and spares, spares that will be dedicated for you in the event that you have, you know, any issues with equipment as well.
May ask a question, you're talking about your standard equipment to Polycom VVX 450?
Yes, sir.
According to the information sheet you provided, the warranty is for one year, sir.
I was looking specifically for if there's anything that's extended on there under our service level agreement that may be beyond that. Typically on electronic equipment like that, it is a standard manufacturer's one-year warranty, but I, I still need to get back with you if there's anything extended beyond that, you know.
After the year, the maintenance agreement will pick it up.
I have, I have a question, maybe it's, maybe it's a little simpler.
We'll see, right?
Right. So, so in the proposal, there is identified a rebate of $25 per unit if they are purchased prior to a date, I believe it's in December. And when we're looking at that sheet there, the, and my eyes are bad, so I'll read from mine because I can't see that. The 53,859 includes, if, if the math is correct on my part, that includes the units being at $153 a piece and a number of 111 units. But my question is, $25 discount that would be applied prior to December if purchased, I'm guessing would come off of that 53,859 and that would take it down to 51,084. So I guess my question is, is the number that we see on the screen, does that include the price at 153 or does it include it at the discounted rate of 128?
Well, I see on the, on the second page behind the, the summary sheet here, Drew, could we switch to the next page? Let's see. And that's blurry to me too. That, that's the 153 price, thank you, times the 111 units. I don't know if the total there, if Brent has included that as part of the 53,859 or not.
I believe it is.
I think it is too.
With my math and I believe Danny, you would agree with that as well. So, just want to make sure that So, just want to make sure that we're recognizing that this is a max number, and there is a possibility for a discount if purchased.
I do feel confident that it is the max, but I also, I believe that it's, that it has, that it's inclusive.
Do this walk through, you plan there and explain as you go through, and if you have any questions, speak up. We'll, we'll ask them as we go through.
Yeah, and again, I apologize that Brent is not here. He's, Brent and his team are the ones that created this and developed it. And unfortunately, we didn't have anyone, anyone else with a couple of folks out of the office in Brent Surgery to go any further, other than the breakdown of each category. I'll be on the same page as you, but you, you know, through the business sets are required from the administrative buildings to EMS, transfer stations, and all those where we came up with the 111 number. I know in the proposal, it talked about scalability and, and you know, if there goes up to, I can't remember if it was 150 or 180, but certainly a scalable system. In, in the second category of that would be the installation, which is not on that page. I'm actually on the, the next one. That's inclusive of that. And then, of course, the monthly service that's involved. As you know, we, we would need reliable broadband service as well. That's, would be a part of that. But here are the hosted prices for the 111 units, for the mobile office units, a little bit different setup, and then the cost for auto attendance and those sort of things. Let's see. Moving right along to, I guess, to the next page, or some, where the data and wire materials are is determine that, you know, the wiring being older and those sort of things, there would need to be some work that's done there too, to bring the, the network, if you will, up to speed. And that will be, that's outlined on the next page. And includes the, you know, patch panels that you may need, data racks, those sort of things, and what the rewiring cost would be, and that's a, the total of $21,238. And that is also listed on the beginning sales summary sheet as part of our total costs of the 53,859. From there, the proposal just goes through the hosted features, standard features. It's just about anything that you could ask for is available. I know with a lot of phone and equipment, you don't always need all the functions and features of everything that's on there, but the Polycom 450 series does give you that out flexibility and opportunity to utilize a lot of different options. There were some specifics that were in the RFP, but that phone certain, system certainly handles those and more. Moving a little bit further along, you mentioned the rebate program. It is from July 1st to December 31st, and that's up to, you know, for the different rebates for this program. I'm looking to see, I don't think we've had any new changes to anything in there. Polycom hasn't offered. And they do offer rebates from time to time. It's not the end-all be-all, but that pretty, pretty good rebate there. And just for general purpose, we include the other products that are available for rebates as well. There's a couple of pages further past that are the, is the service agreement with the terms and conditions. I think it's, it should be right to that page. There you go, which again outlines, you know, our normal business hours, Monday through Friday, 8 to 5, but our covered hours, 24 hours, seven days a week. Equipment refers to the software to be covered by the agreement. And let's see, maintenance release. Identifies any of the terminology in terms of minutes and what's considered upgrade and those sort of things as well. There is a, I don't see it on here, but under the, the payment section, there is a 12-month zero interest or finance, we would cover that for the county as well. And then we can go through the terms and conditions if you like. It's more standard and basic there. But part of it, moving on to some of the pricing for the broadband and the fax lines, just a few pages should be right after these terms are the glossary there and part of the service agreement. And so as I mentioned earlier, there was, the request was for 50. Our closest plan that would cover that would be 100 meg, and that's at a $75, you know, for, for that. There are some anomalies. The sheriff's department will require more bandwidth and, as well as social services, which are also two of the biggest areas that you have. The bandwidth there will be 500, and that's at a cost of $95. And those are, that is special pricing. That is obviously to meet the needs of the RFP, we've reduced those costs. That really, in terms of, you know, basic cost and support and those sort of things, that's, that's the summary of, you know, the RFP on our side. Or you may have more questions, and I'm happy to entertain those as well.
5111. $775. That would come off the 53,859, 80. You would reduce that by $2775.
Total of 51,084, 80.
Yes, sir.
Just a couple of other questions I have. I mean, it's, I think it's difference. Your proposal, recurring cost, there's approximately 20. They didn't talk about. Fully assessed and that covers every. Project.
We, you know, our folks have worked on the system and with the county for a number of years. They're fairly familiar with it. First go around, we did a pretty thorough site survey. Were able to, you know, engage there with our team, and then they went back over it again for a second time. So I feel pretty confident that's going to cover it with anything. There could be a challenge here and there that, that pops up, but I feel we're pretty thorough on that. And we, you know, as always, as we've done in the past, we're always willing to, to work and go above and beyond, and we always try to under promise and over deliver. And we have a history of doing that as well, so.
Say, I mean, that's. Bring cost. I mean, me, that's where I've got to figure out the difference in how to, what's covered in those, your numbers versus the other one.
Right.
To be explained.
Well, there are issues.
The main concern is, is, you know, whoever we go with, that we get the service that we're looking for, and everything's installed, and everything's covered, and then we're not going to have to back up and, and twiddle our thumbs to try to figure out how to cross a bridge where something maybe wasn't accounted.
Yes, sir. And, and along the way, you know, leadership has changed, those sort of things here. Folks have, and different people have been in the system and worked on it. When you mentioned the word "bridge," people have created patches and bridges to try to make things work. Regardless of who your chosen provider is, that wiring's going to have to be done, or else you're going to have a brand-new system with issues. You need, I mean, it's time to upgrade, make that investment, bite the bullet, and move forward so that you, when you do have issues, and that's the thing about technology, you will have issues at some point. It's how they're addressed in terms of customer service and response and reliability. But that'll be something, if you have a brand-new network, you understand where everything is or hasn't been, you know, patches over the years by, you know, someone says, oh, I know how to do that. I can save us some money, or I can help out here, and they can, they probably can. But it changes the routing and, you know, maybe some substitute equipment here and there that we've seen. Those sort of things can change with it, with starting out on the right foot, making an investment in that, which is necessary, you know, that, that works better for everyone, and the longevity of the system as well, and the reliability, which is key.
This will eliminate all of our current piece milled, patch milled.
Exactly. Yes, sir. That's a better way to put it. I was saying a little bit kinder, I guess, but.
Well, I mean, we all know, we've, we've just, we haven't had an IT department. We're trying to make some improvements there. The board has talked about it, and we've tried to move in that direction, and circumstances just haven't worked as soon as we'd like. Every department head is kind of, you know, they've had to, you know, answer the call of duty, and whatever it takes, they were, you know, they went with who they had and who they were comfortable with, and it's been different, things done in different locations, you know, and that's, you know, we're just trying to improve, and whenever we pull the trigger on something. I, I would like to eliminate some of this stuff that's gone past and.
Sure.
What we have.
Sure. And every department.
To go, and we're going to get good service for hopefully years to come.
That was echoed with virtually every department as well. And, and it was no fault of anyone, that everyone tried to do the best that they could in the time constraints and within budget constraints that they could. I'm not, definitely not knocking it, you know, anyone at all for that. And there's, when it comes to technology, and as some of you have some experience with it, sometimes there's, there was multiple ways, kind of the old adage of, there's more than one way to skin a cat. You can make something work at the end of the day, you know, how it all fits together when you have that big jigsaw puzzle. Is it the picture that you really need? So that's what we want. We want something that's consistent, that's reliable, that we know where the network is, that we have a standardization, so that the equipment that you can get has the reliability and functionality that you need with all the headaches and challenges that you have of trying to backtrack someone else's work.
I guess I would just kind of end my questions with this one. So if we were to commit with, with skyline and these numbers, no matter what you ran into, you're going to do it for what you've proposed?
Sir, we, we will make the network work and cover everything that we've found within this proposal to, to address all your issues with a new, new network.
Without any shortcut?
Yes, sir. There won't be any shortcuts, I assure you of that.
Thank you, I just.
What would be the timeframe from the time that we say go to you would be finished?
We'll have to get back with you. I'd hate to, to give you a, a data in terms of days, weeks, or months that it would take. We would get on it, it'd be a high priority for us, for our teams to get in here and get it deployed. But I can get back to you on that. I apologize, I don't have a reference for that at this moment. Brent could give you that commitment. Unfortunately, I can't do that at this moment. We would expedite it, and that's not the answer you're looking for.
How long is recurring, how long is that, that good for? What term before you go up on the price?
Look at the, this is drafted. Is a great question, it should be outlined in here. I'll just need to find it. I would say that the, for the term of the, well, the pricing itself is for the term of the agreement. So if you, you know, at the end of the 60-month term, you, you know, you could renegotiate or see what, you know, what the best rate is out there for, at that time, or take it back out for bid.
That you provide the customer service. It's my understanding from a discussion or an email from the county manager that we've been advised that our system is obsolete and that there are no replacement parts. You call that customer service?
Well, in technology, you know, it does change. Laptops that we had a couple of years ago or longer, they're no longer good.
I sold radios, I sold cars. If something's becoming obsolete, I let my customer know that in a timely fashion that it is becoming obsolete so that they can start to making plans to replace it, not at the last moment, whenever I start to having problems. Because we are a government entity, we've got to maintain communications.
Certainly understand that. We have phone systems out there that are 25 years old and working fine with no issues whatsoever. It just depends on what the service is. You know, we, we do periodic visits with our customers. We're very visible and very present, and if there's an issue, our customers can certainly let us know. If there's, you know, that's part of the maintenance agreement. If you have an issue, call us. You know, we, if it's a network in terms of broadband, we know when your network's down before you do, or at least the same, same time. So we have that part covered. When it comes to the equipment itself, obsolete, you can still use it and Band-Aid it and patch it, but it, but that's, that's not good enough, you know, certainly.
I spent 26 years in the Marine Corps in communications. I was dealing with equipment that was designed and built in the 50s, tubes.
Solid state, I understand.
I knew it was obsolete, I made it work. But this is a different situation. We are a government entity that has got to maintain. We, it just irks the bejesus out of me whenever you know something's coming obsolete to let us know so that we can start planning. That man guards his deck going budget, like a virgin, guards her chastity. We cannot do anything, we've got to plan in advance. And if you're not going to tell us that this equipment is now becoming obsolete, and that you don't have replacement parts, that puts us in a bind that we're in right now. That's not a question, I guess it's a statement. Mr. Chairman, I've, I'm finished.
Thank you. Anybody any further questions?
I have a question, and I don't know if it's appropriate, if it's not, just tell me. One of the questions that I have myself is regardless, if it's with, with you or the competition. County has established phone numbers. I don't know what the degree of difficulty or availability, or even how that would work, but it is automatic, I would imagine, if we remained with you, that those numbers would not be impacted.
That's correct.
I do not know the answer on how or what would happen to those numbers if we were to go with someone else.
Well, that would be a question particularly for the other provider, if they're awarded that. I can tell you that we've been in situations where, we've been in bidding similar to this, and another provider was chosen that said that they could port the numbers. And at the end of the day, it's not, it's not a skyline call, we're required to, if it's, if they have the ability to do that. There are a lot of things, there's a third-party vendor that's, that's required to be a part of that. But legally, we are required to release those numbers. However, the portability and the exchanges that are behind that with another provider, I don't, I don't know how that works. I, we've been in a situation, we've had to go back in and do emergency reconnects and those sort of things, which was a nightmare. And I won't name the entity, but they were, they were down for quite, quite a bit of time, unfortunately.
I'll ask the, the others that same question.
Certainly, yeah.
I just think that with, with the establishment of those numbers and people's, you know, they're used to those numbers, if, if the process would involve us having to, you know, basically get new. basically get new numbers, then there's a whole cluster that goes along with that.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So the, the same thing that I've asked you, I will ask the other provider as well, because there's a value to that.
Certainly.
Now, what that value is, is to be determined.
Laterhead, website changes, there's a multitude of things that go, every document that you have has, has those numbers on there. So, yeah.
I just wanted to make sure, at least from, from that standpoint, that the availability existed.
Right. With us, you're, you're fine.
Everybody's done. Anybody else? Sir, we appreciate you covering and explaining everything. We, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Would ask for the IdeaCom folks to, your representative, to come up to the microphone and go through your presentation. Hi.
Just so you guys know, we're, I think you were a little late, so we'll tell you. We're, we're just putting the proposals up and allowing the opportunity to walk through and talk about it, answer questions as we go.
Okay.
Just get familiar.
Okay. Sounds good. I'm Amy Piner. You'll also probably see my name as Amy Hoag. I got married, so you're going to see both names just for a little bit. I'm the Director of Sales. I've brought with me my engineer, Brad Aeter, and this is John Thomas, the President of IdeaCom. So just kind of going through the RFP for us, we did meet all the requirements that were stated in the RFP. We broke down the monthly reoccurring by building as was stated within the RFP. So what's a little bit different for us is that your hardware cars, costs for your phones that you're normally used to, all of your phones are for free. They are warranted for one year from the manufacturer. So you're not having to put any capital cost out for any phones.
Sir, if you would please, if, they cannot hear you from that microphone, and this is being recorded. Thank you.
And one of the other questions, let's say that they add over that, would they be charged for the phone?
No. So with us, whenever you add a user, or we consider a phone, there is no charge for the actual phone or handset. So you only pay per month for users. What's also a little bit different with us is, you know, within the RFP, you've asked for so many. However, if you came to us later and said, "Hey, you know, Allegheny in Motion had five phones or five users, but actually we've scaled that department back to one." You're allowed to terminate the users you are not using, therefore you're not being billed for those charges. You're not locked into a long-term contract, and our pricing is solid until you decide to make a change. The only time you're going to see an increase is if you do add a user. So if you came back to us and said, "Allegheny in Motion has five, we added five new people," then you're going to have your uptick in charge for the five new users. But again, other than that, you're not going to see a price increase. We have included everything in here from if it is a fax machine that needs an ATA adapter, which what that does is gives you the ability to fax in and out of a standard fax machine. This is including, you know, pretty much every piece of hardware that was within the RFP.
Yes.
Commissioner.
Go ahead and let Bobby, if he'd like.
Go ahead.
Ever you did your quote, end of quote, was there anything in there about porting of numbers?
No. And I'll be more than happy to address that, because I know that's a huge elephant in the room. If y'all want to go ahead and talk about it right now.
Please adjust it.
Okay, so-
Please address it. Excuse me.
So, last year, I actually did port within the county. This is actually an email transcript between myself and someone at Skyline to a company that's actually right down the street from you guys, where I ported. So the front page is an email, because I wanted you to see it, of where I did have the communication with Skyline of porting, sorry, that's a lot of, with porting the phone numbers. On, on the second page, if you'll look, so you can see that the Skyline is communicating with us and telling us what is needed in order to port this company's phone number over to our service. I did exactly what they stated. If you'll notice, on the second page is the date that I actually ported the number, and it is active in the system.
So that set precedent, did it not?
Did. So we were, we ported last year. Well, I do know that on December the 2nd, because I was up here actually doing a survey, it was noted in your paper that we won. So at that point, to me, Skyline is aware that I'm a, I'm a vendor up here, that they have some competition, and that now we're going to port. So I find it a little ironic that last year we had the ability to port from Skyline, and now we don't have the ability because Skyline has locked us out. But what I do found a little more amazing is that I actually have another transcript here from someone else who's contacted Skyline, wanted to port into their territory, and they actually quoted them a quote and said they would let them port their numbers into their territory. So we can't port phone numbers from Skyline, but Skyline is going to port into their territory. So I find that a little ironic.
Has the FCC addressed this matter?
No, but you can file a complaint with the FCC. And we can as well.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so it was not in the RFP?
It was not in the RFP, no.
But you have done advanced planning on that?
Yes. So in the event that they continue to lock us out and we can't port, what you can do is what we call a hard call forward, also known as a remote call forward. Now, you will have to have Skyline remote call forward that number into a number that we now allocate as your new main number until you can get the new number out there to be able to tell people. A normal remote call forward in this industry might be $5 to $10 per phone number. Normal people, when they do it, they're only going to take their main numbers that they have to have that are published and do a hard call forward. So that would be your option to do.
Per number?
Per number. Now, I don't know what Skyline would charge you. I can just kind of tell you what industry standard is and what we see day-to-day.
Now, I do have another question. If the equipment that you're selling today becomes obsolete tomorrow, or they say that they're going to, that it will become obsolete and repair parts will be available for a year, what are you going to do to your customers?
Well, the difference in what we're quoting is you actually don't have any what we call the brains of a hardware system. So like right now, you have a traditional phone system to which IdeaCom still sells to this day. But we're looking at a hosted model. What that means to you guys is there's no brains or hardware sitting downstairs that's going to lose a card, get struck by lightning, the, the normal wear and tear that you see, and it's going to become obsolete. However, that being said, if a new phone comes out and a new version, we're going to let you know, "Hey, there's an upgraded phone. Would you like it?" But most customers, it's just a phone. They're going to use it day in and day out. We do account reviews with our customers. We usually like to try those at least every six months to have an account review. An account review is not just to come in and say, "Hey, and how are you doing?" You know, ours is going to be, "Let's talk about the challenges that you're facing. You know, what are you doing for your IT solutions? What are you doing for your firewall? What are, you know, what, you know, what we've seen in the industry?" You know, so that's, we're a little bit different, where we like to come in and build that relationship and have those conversations.
Do you provide the firewalls also?
We do. So we actually are an IT company as well. So we are a true MSP, a managed service provider. So we provide anything from a consultative approach to kind of a partnership, as it could be with the town, meaning that we would come in, evaluate the services, see where you might have some faults within the system. I mean, one of the things, let's just be honest, there are no firewalls currently. That's one of our main concerns. And that would be something that we would touch base with you guys. But that is all on IdeaCom. But we provide, we would provide every type of equipment, whether that is firewalls, switches, access points, cabling. I mean, we do basically soup to nuts.
I notice in the canvas that our consultant did in this building, if I'm correct, there is no need for the amount of data that we are requesting. Do you do periodical reviews?
We do. And we would give you our, what we see in the industry. So if I was to, you know, come in and evaluate it, I would say, you know, the way that you're doing it now, I may suggest a different approach to how you're doing it, and then give you the reasons behind that approach. Right now, everybody's got their own individual connections, which then makes you have, you know, all these POE switches everywhere. That's more hardware failure that's sitting in your network. So we would design it a little bit different.
Other questions I have, Mr. Chairman? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? You may have said, but I didn't catch what your bandwidth was operating on.
We actually did the bandwidth that was in the proposal, which was the, so for the administrative building, everyone was required for a 50 by 50. Same thing for the county office building, which is Allegheny in Motion, Soil and Water. The state, of course, provides for extension. Your maintenance was 50 by 50, transfer station 50 by 50, sheriff was the 150, EMS was 50, social services was 500. We, we literally matched everything that was in the RFP.
Skyline outlined their non-recurring charges of pulling new wires and were all the, was the wiring compatible to what, what you would put in?
Yes. So we actually, on our non-recurring document, we stated the number of pulls that we would do per office. We pull all CAT 6 cabling each time we pull.
At 6?
Yes. Yes, sir. Was not stated that you needed plenum, but, I mean, that is something that we offer whenever it's, it's suggested or required. But it was not in the RFP.
I can, I can tell you the difference between 5E, CAT 6, and going to fiber optic and CAT 7, but I don't think any, we would need anything above CAT 6. Yeah. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, but I estimate, if I remember my specs correctly, you would support 1G up to 100, or, excuse me, 300 meters? So we're well with under that. We wouldn't even be busting the, the CAT 6.
And it would take you to the future as well.
Yes. Until we go to fiber optic.
Yes.
Until everyone's fiber to the desktop.
And we'll tell you that the phones that we actually quoted are also Wi-Fi phones. So in the event that you do not have a cable that is at a particular area, but you do have Wi-Fi, we can make the phones work as well. In the event of a down situation, I know I had heard that you guys had a down situation. In the event that you lost power, you lose internet, you have the ability with this solution to actually launch what is the mobile app, which is free for every single user. When you do that, that now becomes your phone system, and you can continue to answer calls, just like you are sitting at your desk and picking up that handset. You can transfer your calls. Anytime you call out from that mobile app, it actually out pulses the number of the building that you're calling from, not your cellphone number. So that way, you're actually, you'd never miss a call in a down scenario.
What, just so the folks at home that's watching, what's, what's your total installation cost?
Uh, we- 870.
6870.
We'll say. I missed one piece when I was talking to the consultant. We actually, it was like 100 and some dollars. So it was at, it's $27,458. That is all material. That's everything.
At 6, everything.
Yes. That's everything. That's your switches. That is everything.
Your monthly reoccurring?
While she's looking, just one clarification. The, what, what I show in communication with Danny was there was a piece of wireless equipment that was left out.
Right, at the-
Which totaled 580, or $588. So when you're seeing the 26, whatever the number that you're referencing, and on the sheet that Danny prepared, it included that extra $588. So that is where that 27, 458 number comes from, as opposed to that 26.
That wireless router, is that the one for the transfer station so that you can use wireless connection for that instead of hardwiring?
Yes, sir.
Please. I'm retired as a master gunner. You say, "Sir," I started looking around.
Okay.
An officer.
If I don't say it, my father's going to get me, so.
Now you really make me feel old.
Your, your monthly reoccurring?
It is. Sorry. Do you mind pulling that one up real quick? I'm sorry.
Recurring cost.
Oh.
328. I'll tell you what's on our sheet. It's 328998.
Yes, that's it.
For a, for a yearly total of 3947976.
That was it. The 30, the 32, sorry. Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Sorry.
About a timeframe for, if you get the bid, when you start, when, how long is it going to take you to finish?
Start to finish would be- 60 days? We can do it. If push come to shove, if you needed it sooner, we can make it happen. But I would rather give you a 60-day timeframe to make sure that we come in with our trainer and sit down with each department, go over programming, because, just because you have a system program the way it is today, may not be how you really want it. You want to make some changes. So I would actually bring in the trainer to come in and sit down, discuss the programming, and also discuss a training schedule, because we would have a trainer that would be on-site as well, when, even before and when we go live, we have a trainer that's here, walking around, making sure that you know how to use the new phone system and all the features and functions.
Because when we were going around doing the site surveys on each site, we had actually talked to some of the detectives and could see how we could actually help those guys out, the social workers, see if we could help.
We did actually bring a phone up here just to verify it worked on this network. We went around to every single department, booted up the phone, made test calls. Everything worked correctly.
The other thing, do you have all this equipment as a backup? If something goes down, you just, you don't have to order it and wait, and wait for parts?
To tell you a little bit about us, we're a $300 million operation. We have over 130 offices throughout the United States. And so we focus on the inside of the building, where a lot of our competition focuses on the outside of the building. We come in here, it's just like, I see potential that we could partner with you guys on your IT staff and help you guys take your, take the community to the next level with that as well.
The question. We've just gone over our emergency operation plan. If we had a situation where we had to operate, open up our emergency operations center, and we needed additional phones, could you provide them and bring them into the system?
Yes.
The system will support that?
Yes, sir. This will support as many users as you want. And, and we can do it immediately. So let's say you needed it right now. You can't even wait for a, a phone. There are other ways that we can launch users.
Let's give you this scenario. Let's just say it's an emergency situation, and your internet is down, okay, whether it's through us or the competition. As long as the cellphone towers are up, you can make calls and receive calls off of the mobile app portion of it.
I find that interesting, since Microsoft went down, or we had a internet outage on Facebook the other day.
Yes.
On a programming issue that dominoed throughout the world, didn't it?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to mention that, you know, you brought up a good point. We have EMS-
We have EMS in Winston-Salem, they take about 800 calls a day. That's a call center, and they handle all the emergency tickets across the East Coast, is all generated out of, out of Winston-Salem.
For the ambulances.
For all the ambulances. The other thing that I wanted to mention, and I'm sorry to butt in, but I just wanted to, when we talk about services, it's critical. And we have a company in Greensboro called MSG, you probably never heard of. But if you went to Lowe's and bought a part for like a microwave or something, and all of a sudden that microwave didn't work, you had to bring it back or report it back to the store number, whatever Lowe's store number was. They in turn call MSG.
Which is a call center.
Which is a call center. And they got hit in Greensboro when we had this storm a while back. It demolished their entire building.
A tornado struck it.
And hit some residential, but hit, tore down their building. Well, we had them operational at 8 o'clock the next morning with 55 agents in our conference room, which is about, was about to sign off. And that's, the service is important. Another thing I want to mention too, the E, and it, and this stands for Executon. I don't know if you ever heard of the name Executon. But Executon, back in 1936, invented the intercom. 1947 took it aboard the USS Saratoga, and we won the Navy, only contractor to win the Navy E award during the war, and it was because we were able to communicate across these ships quickly, instead of taking 30 to 45 minutes to walk across the ship.
And we did.
And last year, about a year and a half ago, we went down to Camp Lejeune, well, it was a bid, we, we've got a SARS number, a Department of Defense number. And to get that, I don't know, you would, you would know, John, but to get the number like that, they check you out very thoroughly. Okay, it's not an easy process. And so we were able to get the, all the recruiting, when you called 800 recruit number in the state of North Carolina, what was kind of cool is we set it up for the, for the government so that when they called that 800 number, it would say, "Thank you for calling," you know, what, the, the US Recruiting Office. If you know, if you, please enter, how did it, please enter the zip code you're calling from. So you put in 27360, it would immediately route that number to a cellphone in Thomasville, North Carolina, to that recruiter, which is pretty cool. I mean, nobody else was even thinking about that. And then, and then came across, Camp Lejeune came up with the RFP, and they needed some, the bid installed, what, within two weeks? Two weeks. They're looking to replace other look. Anyway, when it comes to service, we take it very, very seriously. We also have accounts, and we take national accounts and install them all the way across the country. So in other words, we can take orders in Greensboro, install them in LA, Denver, Houston. I agree. Parts, we're Graybar's number one account in terms of if, if you need things like, the only account, payroll account, that's our CEO to go to their board meeting, the only one. That we have. Just want to bring.
Thank you.
Do y'all handle your own installation, or do you sub that out?
That is all in-house. It is IDICOM technicians.
All the following, you know, service repair needs are the same?
Yes, absolutely.
And of course, the cost of what?
Correct. Because we have surveyed this twice now, so if it's something that we've missed, then that's on us. We're not going to come back to you and do a bait and switch.
The length of your contract was what?
There is no contract. There is a month-to-month.
And some people ask, "Well, if there's no month-to-month, you could actually go up, go up on us, okay?" Well, with us, if you don't like us, you can cut us off then. That's how confident we are in our product, that we're not going to sit there and hold you under a three-year contract, and you're sitting there paying thousands more dollars that you shouldn't be paying.
But also, but also keep in mind, in the event that you have a downturn in your business, you know, you can get, you can remove those users from your account, thus then saving additional money. You're not going to be paying for something that you're not using.
Government entity, we never get smaller.
That's true.
Mr. Martin?
That comment you made on removing a user, the phones remain here, I mean, there are phones?
Yes, sir, they are your phones.
Okay, so, day-to-day operations, something goes down and somebody calls for help, what should we expect on a lead time or time?
Our emergency. If you've got a bad phone, we'll get you one up here the same day if we got a tech.
So what constitutes urgency?
Urgency is a day, like you guys had Friday, we would have somebody up here within two hours.
System-wide, or that's one extension not working?
System.
The great thing about the solution that you're looking at, though, a lot of what you're needing done can be a remote access. That way, you're not having to always wait for a technician to come on-site, because if you have an issue, the issue's going to be with the phone, which we can actually troubleshoot remotely. So if it's a user that calls in and says, "Hey, I forgot my password," it's something you change automatically. You don't have to come on-site and make those changes. So a lot of work can be done remotely and instantaneously, because we do, we have a call center that takes calls.
Any other, any further questions?
Sure.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Going back, there's, there's no contract. We've already identified that. So what, what is the assurance, just, just as it, you know, you're not worried about other monies, what is the assurance that this recurring cost remains the recurring cost? Where is the guarantee?
If you would like to sign a contract, you're more than welcome to. We don't make our customers do so. We have never had an increase. But if you, and if you want that in writing, we're more than happy to do so, or we're more than happy to put you in a contract.
Because I, you know, when I broke the sheet down, I, I did it on 12-month increments. And I went out five years. I'll just tell you, I went out 60 months. Without an agreement, I mean, I believe you, I don't have a reason not to believe you, but, you know, in 24 months or 27 months, and it goes up, and we don't have an agreement stating it was going to be X amount, that might be a question for our attorney to, to look at, but if, if the availability exists, then that, that's okay.
Absolutely.
We can absolutely do a contract. We had, we've had.
Offense.
I have no reason to doubt that, I just have to ask that question, because without something identifying it, where's the fluctuate?
Mention the budget that he watches.
Sure.
And, and the other item, which, which I ask, we, we've already talked a little bit about the porting of numbers. And the understanding is, the availability is there, at least with the current provider. I, I allowed all of our commissioners, which, that's the information they need that you passed out. I'm just a mouthpiece at this point. But if the availability exists there, I'm guessing the availability exists with, with you and your company. So what could possibly cause any concerns if both, both, both the current and the, you know, the potential additional, what would be the concerns over the porting?
The porting at this point would, it has to be a fallback on Skyline of why they're not allowing to port. I mean, they have let, they let us port last year. You can see we have the confirmation of where we ported the phone number, where you can see the communication that I had with a Skyline employee, and you can see the communication that a Skyline employee sent a proposal out to a customer saying they would port their number. So, you know, every, everyone in this room pretty much knows that we cannot port at this time, because we are being blocked. We have been told we are blocked.
But what I can take from this meeting is that it's been identified that the availability exists, and you as a, as the competitor, also have the availability to make it happen.
Absolutely, absolutely.
That's, that's what I can take from this meeting.
I'm a company called ITS, and ITS is, you know, as you get into this field, and this is...
If you'd a little bit closer to the mic, so that the public can hear you, please.
Kept seeing everything go more towards IT, VoIP communications, you know, data, the data arena. Brad's pretty astute. I wasn't. I mean, even though I worked for Xerox and IBM, and I was a football player, I played at Notre Dame, and, but in 1981, well, 1979, I graduated. 1980, I went to work in the copier field, and then went to communications with IBM. But I, I saw, we saw the technology moving towards the IT world, and we saw it first. And we made that move and started an IT company called ITS. And ITS is a managed contract company that's, that, what we do is, and we have two different business models. One is, we're their, we're customers, their, their entire IT staff, okay? We have, we act as a CIO, I have a guy that comes in, will sit out, and he's your IT guy. And then we have our staff underneath it. And then we have another one, which is a co-managed, and a co-managed meaning that with your IT people, we, we set up on the backside and make sure you're not getting hit, hit with any, any virus. We got it all backed up in Atlanta in a data center, so you're well protected. So I just wanted to throw that out there. We have another model, and the, the, the model where we put a person on-site, which we have in, in some cases, and they're there from 8 to 5, Monday through Friday, and they report to us. So we have a business model like that as well. I just want to throw that on the table, in the event that you should look for something like that, we, we offer that.
I know that, that our concern is the quality of the service from both companies. Quality, and we look at the price. Also, at the same time, I, I feel, I've, I've got to say this, that this is a very small community. We've been with Skyline, before Skyline was Skyline. My grandfather helped build the telephone system from Twin Oaks to Sparta. Skyline has been a member of this family of Allegheny County. Scholarships, they advertise, they're part of the community. And, and that weighs heavily on my, part of my decision, but I've been trained by Mr. Carter that we also have to look very closely at the dollars. And to me, the dollars speak, speak very loudly. Whoever has the, the best service, the best quality, and the best bid. But I, I just wanted to say that Skyline has been with this county for all these years, and, and I, I take that into consideration also.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I agree with Bobby. Skyline's been with us for all these years, but right now, Skyline is the eighth-largest cooperative telephone system in the nation. I believe the last company that you bought up, small telephone company in South Carolina. Before that, it was a small telephone company in Tennessee. And what you've got to realize is, whenever the telephone system was brought into Allegheny County, it had to be a cooperative, because nobody else would come in and invest in the infrastructure to do that. So you had small mom-and-pop operations that set up their own operations. And I never realized it until I was communications chief in Cherry Point, North Carolina, and we were going to change out our switchboard. And the gentleman that came down with ATT representative had a lifetime job, because AT&amp;T had bought out the small mom-and-pop telephone company that his parents had opened. Right now, where you had no competition, if you were a small telephone cooperative, things have changed. And I feel for you, because it's got to, you've got to be like the blacksmith that sees the first Model T roll into town. People are not going to landline. Many phones in Allegheny County are simply cellphone, that's all they need. This is, change is a world, it is changing. I never thought I'd see Satcom in the Marine Corps, but now it's heavily Satcom. It is a change in the technology, it is a change in the business environment, and I hate it. But I also realize that that little bitty Skyline telephone is not limited to Allegheny County. It's all over, especially in the southeast. So I've got to look at the finances of the county, I've got to look at the service providers, the capabilities of the system, because there are things that we have got, and sometimes it's, I think that we're going to have to drag Allegheny County into the 21st century kicking and screaming and fussing and cussing, but it's got to happen, because we are here. Skyline has done a lot for this county, I'll admit that. You've got the fiber optic in the county, we have amazing capabilities, but this is the bottom line, that we've got to look at, because our funds are limited. We will do what we feel is best for the county, I'm sure. I have faith in my fellow commissioners. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Too, I am very grateful to Skyline for what they've done. You have to look at dollars and cents, but Skyline is, they do provide a lot of jobs for people in this county. And they also give back a lot to the county through scholarships and different things. I would just like to hear from you and give you the opportunity to say how you are going to invest in our county.
Invested a lot in Forsyth County, on the board of the Better Business Bureau of the, the central part of the United States. I'm also on the board of GMA Greensboro Merchants Association, so I'm, I'm a Rotary member, I'm sure you all have Rotary members up here. You know, so we participate a lot in, in giving back. We donate phone systems to nonprofitable organizations. We, you look at, look in Winston, for example, you know, we don't, we donate a lot to the, the baseball teams, actually, not only in Winston, but in Davidson County and Guilford County. You know, it, there's a couple of things that we can't do. We can't sell politics. I can't sell, we can't come up here and represent an emotional type of thing. We base our decision, you know, when we look at, we go out to companies and, and organizations like yours, we present the facts of what we can do best. But I can't sit here and promise you from an emotional standpoint, or from a political standpoint, that we can do anything other than if you reach out to us, you give us a business, we'll see what we can do to help you and your organization. I mean, I don't know what, how else to other, to answer that, other than what we've done in, in Greensboro, and, and Winston, down on the coast. We have customers four hours, five hours away from us that we never hear from, because their system works. And they got a great value and a great price, because we buy on volume. So it makes it tough when, when competitors see us walk in the door, because we offer such a great value. When you talk about value, you talk about what type of company am I buying from? Skyline's a good company, I, you know, I've, I sold Pioneer Eclipse. I don't know how many ever heard of Pioneer Eclipse years ago.
I've heard.
Well, I sold them the Executon phone system back in 1980, 81, something... Eclipse years ago. Well, I sold them the Executon phone system back in 1980, 81, something like, no, 1990, 90, something like that. But, and deer hunted up here a lot. And one of my relatives has a family here. But, you know, the point I guess I'm making is that, you know, we'll do whatever we can to help this community, as we have every other community. And if you give us the opportunity, I mean, you never know until you try. But again, you know, we, we value the opportunity to present to you, which we have, and you've given to us. And again, you know, for the community, you know, you've got to base your decision on the facts and what's good for your budget. And we try to come in and do our best at that. And not only get, you know, provide you the best we can, but then to follow through. As if you look at good business people today, and in counties and everything else, they look at four criteria. What type of company am I going to do business with? Do they have a track record? Do they, are they large enough to support me? Number two, what type of product are they offering? Is it one that can grow as I grow? And an evolutionary method, not a revolutionary, meaning there's going to be a large outlay of cash to get it done, what your needs are. And then the third, the third most important part is what kind of service and support am I going to get? And you've all brought these up. Are you going to be able to service me? Give me the service that I demand? And we do that. I've got thousands and thousands of customers that I tell you that. And then, and you can ask Amazon. Amazon only has about, what, 30,000 phones from us throughout the United States. And then last and most importantly, what is the overall value? So if you base your decision on the company, product, service, and value, I think we always land on top. If there's other things that play, come into play, we can't sell on that. Okay? Good question. Thank you.
May I ask if we could turn the lights back on, since our presentations are on?
I really don't have much to say. And thank you for the opportunity. You know, we've been here. We'll continue to be here. I've not seen the letter of the porting issue that was raised. We're not, we can't by law block someone. So if the paperwork is not filled out properly, then it has to be rejected. We're required and held to that standard. If all the items and criteria is met on there, we have to allow porting. If it's a comparison to another company that's porting in or porting out, it makes no difference to us. We port every day, and we port in every day, and we port out every day. But we are required that the objectives within that report, and there's a checklist, as long as those are met, we can't block that. So I would like to just, you know, make that known. But again, thank you all for all that you do. I know it's not an easy job. I know you have a tough decision ahead of you. We're not going anywhere. We're here to help and support in any way possible. Prior to this meeting, I was with the superintendent, handing them their athletic grant check for this year, what we do every year, and we'll continue to do that. So you can always count on Skyline, whether it's with this award or without. But thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Well, I don't have anything to add. My fellow commissioners has talked everything, and I don't have much to add. But I agree. I mean, Skyline's been here, and they do great in the community, offer great service and provide service. And I'm going to leave it right there. Present time, I'm ready for a five-minute recess. We'll take a, take a five-minute recess and come back and finish up.
joy over that. I'd like to have a price decrease.
With, with actually the way SIP is going, you guys are going in the right direction, okay? With the hosted phone system, whether it's us or them, you need to make sure that you get a SIP-based phone system hosted, okay? But here's what's happening, is that instead of all these prices, you remember how we'd have phone lines, 60 bucks a month and all that? The prices are going down because of how the traffic is routed throughout all the different carriers. So what's happening is going down. It's not going up. It's actually going down.
Based on that comment, contract for distance that...
Yes. To be honest...
On one hand. On the other hand, if we want a five-year assurance, which, just to decide, then, then we would want to contract that we're going to be, we'll be flat for the term. Okay. I was, I was just...
One of the first ones to tip trunk. Haven't had any...
And just so you guys understand how it works, because either side of the house. So this I P phone, hosted phone that you'll be getting, right? It plugs into the data jack of it, and it's all tone of the phone, plug it in at your house. So COVID shut us down. They could go and take their phone, plug it into their houses.
So each phone is going to have a I P address.
Yes, sir.
So if Mr. Carter has to work from home, he can take his home, his phone home at night, and he's right back into the system.
Yes, sir.
It can follow him wherever he goes.
Good to know.
And then his beard will start to fallen out.
And you can actually go in there, like, for some of the maintenance guys and stuff, their desk phone and their cellphone can ring simultaneously. It has recording in there. So it can, like, that's where I was going for the, the social workers and stuff. You can sit there and record the call. The social workers don't have to be on their mobile phone and somebody burning up their mobile phone when they're trying to be with their family. They can actually just route, and the app would actually answer the call for you. It's technology like that, guys, that's going to...
If I may, Mr. Chairman, in all fairness, Skyline's system will do the same thing if it's voiceover I P, SIP.
That's, he's explained very well the value of hosted.
Technology's the same. We're just looking over, yeah.
But the client, the mobile client is within...
If he wanted to get a bit more gray in his beard, he can just open up the thing, and it'll start ringing there.
Any other questions before the recess? Mark?
Thank you. Sorry.
You got the total cost for each company on our...
The comparison.
The comparison?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, if there's nothing else, we're going to take a five-minute recess. There calls for a five-minute recess.
And the comment was made, I mean, it was made, had a price increase. I'm not for joy over that. I'd like to have a price decrease.
With, with actually the way SIP is going, you guys are going in the right direction, okay? With the hosted phone system, whether it's us or them, you need to make sure that you get a SIP-based phone system hosted, okay? But here's what's happening, is that instead of all these prices, you remember how we'd have phone lines, 60 bucks a month and all that? The prices are going down because of how the traffic is routed throughout all the different carriers. So what's happening is going down. It's not going up. It's actually going down.
Based on that comment, contract for distance that...
Yes. To be honest...
On one hand. On the other hand, if we want a five-year assurance, which, just to decide, then, then we would want to contract that we're going to be, we'll be flat for the term. Okay. I was, I was just...
One of the first ones to tip trunk. Haven't had any...
And just so you guys understand how it works, because either side of the house. So this I P phone, hosted phone that you'll be getting, right? It plugs into the data jack of it, and it's all tone of the phone, plug it in at your house. So COVID shut us down. They could go and take their phone, plug it into their houses.
So each phone is going to have a I P address.
Yes, sir.
So if Mr. Carter has to work from home, he can take his home, his phone home at night, and he's right back into the system.
Yes, sir.
It can follow him wherever he goes.
Good to know.
And then his beard will start to fallen out.
And you can actually go in there, like, for some of the maintenance guys and stuff, their desk phone and their cellphone can ring simultaneously. It has recording in there. So it can, like, that's where I was going for the, the social workers and stuff. You can sit there and record the call. The social workers don't have to be on their mobile phone and somebody burning up their mobile phone when they're trying to be with their family. They can actually just route, and the app would actually answer the call for you. It's technology like that, guys, that's going to...
If I may, Mr. Chairman, in all fairness, Skyline's system will do the same thing if it's voiceover I P, SIP.
That's, he's explained very well the value of hosted.
Technology's the same. We're just looking over, yeah.
But the client, the mobile client is within...
If he wanted to get a bit more gray in his beard, he can just open up the thing, and it'll start ringing there.
Any other questions before the recess? Mark?
Thank you. Sorry.
You got the total cost for each company on our...
The comparison.
The comparison?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, if there's nothing else, we're going to take a five-minute recess. There calls for a five-minute recess.[1739.15] I think it really boils down to, to your decision as to, you know, from, from a finance standpoint, which way you'd want to go. I, I do have something I'd like to ask the, the two vendors if, if that's okay. And that would be maybe just to get them to speak, which I, I've talked with both Amy and Brent, and, and we discussed the things that, the questions that I had that, that I wasn't totally clear on. But one thing that I didn't talk to them about is redundancy in their network, and whether actual equipment that's, you're using to provision these services, or is that out in the cloud, or is that something local? And so, I mean, I, I don't know whether you're interested in hearing that or not, but that would be the only additional question that I have. So I would just throw that out to them if they'd like to address it.
Certainly so.
One of the key components to our, you know, to our response is that it is our network that we wholly own and operate. It is fully redundant, so we're not, we're not, you know, piecemealing the things together. It's a network that we use, you know, we brought fiber optic services here to Allegheny County, and this will reside on that network that we service and build ourselves.
As far as hardware, you're not necessarily looking at hardware that's sitting on site. So as we were talking earlier, your hardware that's downstairs that is obsolete, in a hosted environment, there really is no hardware that sits here that maintains or controls the phone system. The only hardware you would have would be the actual desktop that sits, and then also your switches that are powering, that are actually in the RFP. The network itself will, is redundant as well.
Questions?
Thank you. Perhaps I should make it last if I don't want to overstep any commissioners' thought.
I was just going to point out that no matter how good the company, they cannot guarantee that there will not be a backhoe fade, which means whenever somebody cuts the fiber optic line, you cannot guarantee that. That cut you off.
Before I, I get to that, I do want to again express thanks, one, to Danny Vaughn for participating with us and coming on board and helping us to, to get through this process. And I also want to appreciate the, the vendors that have provided these, these proposals. This is, this is a decision that isn't easy because of contributing factors of different From my assessment, looking at the comparison, and I only look at the, the numbers on the papers, there is a substantial difference in the proposal, and I'll just use year one as an example. There is substantial difference in the year one cost. Understanding that one proposal is a five-year arrangement, and the other one is kind of, kind of loose, I guess is how I'll describe it at this point. It's not a criticism when I say loose, it's just a word. Understanding the, the delicacy and difficulties that are assigned to this project. It would be my's choice, and that doesn't mean it's anybody else's but mine, but I, I am, after speaking with our attorney, I would like to firm up, you know, this, this understanding of new contract versus some type of written agreement. It's just a fearful me, not, not that I don't believe anything that was said, but I would like to have some, some further stability that goes along with that. In doing that, I don't think it can happen today, and in no way am I trying to delay any action of this board, but I believe that is something that at least from my perspective, and I will not speak for Heather, but I, I would like to have a little more stability on that. That is a consideration. Then I would ask that we bring this item to your mid-month meeting for a vote, once we have additional stability in place.
Do you think you can look at the contract and have your answers by our mid-month meeting, which is the 18th? Or are you looking at our first meeting in November?
It's probably going to depend on if we start from scratch, or if we're using language potentially that might come from an existing contract, or, you know, where, where are we reinventing the wheel or not? And that's going to make the determination as to how quickly something like that could happen. And, and obviously, you know, if, if it's something that we're creating, then it's not just me creating it for the county and on behalf of the county. It may end up being something that has to go to legal on another department, you know, with another department of, you know, the company that we're talking about too. So that's something that might go back and forth a little bit, so I can't tell you exactly if something would be ready. It's, it's just going to depend on how, how we approach this.
Chairman, if I may.
Sure.
Couldn't we ask the vendors involved if they would provide us with a five-year contract? That way they can draw up a contract, and you could review it? And I believe that your legal counsel would be able to provide it fairly quickly, would you not?
Yes.
And I would request that if you tell us that you are not going to raise your prices, but you would guarantee that we would receive any reductions in the future? So we would ask them to get those contracts or to us as quickly as possible so that we could review.
I think that that would be reasonable then, because we're, we're not reinventing the wheel.
It's November.
Or if you're saying mid-month, I mean, I think that that would be reasonable too. It's just a, a matter of timing, you know, on, on the part of either parties.
If we're mid-month, and if we can't get it together, we'll just have to table it till the first.
I'm sure they've got existing contracts that they would simply change the name and to protect the guilty and, and send them to us.
I would, I would also, often, that, that we are of the essence in timely manners, but this is one of those situations where I would lean heavily that we have it at our mid-month meeting for consideration, because again, we simply can't.
I mean, if it goes down again, we, we just can't keep living like this from week to week if something's going to happen to the system. Nothing else, we can award the contract contention upon accept, we can award the RFP contention upon an acceptable contract, so that we can get things going.
I would, I would just say that, in that respect, personally, I would want to get everything in line on this attempt, and not have to reconsider anything additional.
I don't have it to you.
That settles it.
Um, ask, comment, you. Comment. Switches. OE switches?
Yes, sir.
This, this is, their phones are powered by the act that they're putting, typical jack at home. Powered?
How is the phone powered if you're using Wi-Fi?
Open the floor for a motion to table.
Summon.
Motion and a second. Discussion. All in favor, raise your hand.
And I would clarify.
Mid-month.
Hold pause.
Anybody got anything else? Any closing comments or anything? Heather?
Everybody.
Thank all of the comments.
Bearing with us.
We appreciate it, and we'll, mid-month.
I'm going home and get my boat, guys.
There you go, me too.